Thank you. Hello, everybody, and welcome to the Greenfield City Council meeting. Today is December 16th, 2020. It is our 212th regular meeting. The time now is 7:01 PM. I will call this meeting to order, and we are still virtual. Let's see here. This meeting is being recorded and videotaped by the City Council and GCTV. If anyone else is doing the same, please notify me at this time. Seeing none, Clerk Scott will do a roll call, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Here.
Counselor Gwynn?
Present.
Counselor Disorga?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Counselor Gilmore?
Here.
Vice President Otis?
President.
Wheeler? So sorry. Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld? Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forgie?
Here.
Counselor Ricketts?
Well, I think the face is missing. This is what happened when you have a baby.
Do downloads?
No, no, just say, just say open in browser instead of.
If Counselor Ricketts, are you on the call?
I thought I saw her.
I think I did. I'm just wondering if for some reason.
Email address?
He got lost. I did see her, but I will come back to her. President Stempel?
President. And I'm also going to ask folks, if you are not speaking, which is only Clerk Scott and myself, please make sure that you're muted at this time. We have a lot of folks on the call, and we're going to try to limit background distractions as much as possible. Thank you.
Madam President, you have a quorum. I will keep an eye out for Penny when Counselor Ricketts comes back in, and we'll just make a note of it.
Great, thank you very much. Enjoy your motion to approve the November 18th, 2020 City Council meeting minutes on page three.
So moved, Elmer.
So moved, Jarvis.
So I heard Counselor Elmer was moved and seconded by Gwynn. Any discussion here, folks? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes? We will now please hear from the Superintendent of Schools and perhaps Chair Praddy.
President Stempel, Vice Chairperson, I am so sorry. Counselor Ricketts is on the call.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Amy Praddy for the Greenfield Public Schools. I do not see the superintendent on the line, so I'll go ahead and do a quick report. I could be wrong if she's here. I hope she speaks up. Just real quick, and then I'll take any questions. We are going to have a snow day tomorrow, a traditional snow day. There was some back and forth about what to do in a remote environment, but it was decided that considering the size of the storm and it being the first storm of the year, the students and staff will have a traditional snow day tomorrow with no remote learning. Also, as I often do at this meeting, I like to give an update on our food service program, which has really been the shining star during the pandemic. Starting on the, well, on December 23rd, and then again on December 30th, they are going to give away to all students seven days' worth of meals at each distribution. So that's a breakfast and lunch for seven days. That also includes usually a gallon of milk or half gallon of milk, whatever they have available. And they recently were able to do a giveaway thanks to Dean's Beans. They donated a bunch of Big Y gift certificates that went into bags of lunch distribution. And we're just so pleased with how that program has run since March, pretty much seamlessly, and they're working very hard. We did vote last week to approve winter sports participation for our, I think it's three or four winter sports, and that will, if we're lucky, start up either January, I think it's January 17th now. It has been changed a couple of times, but we are hoping that our athletes will be able to participate with all the COVID protocols in place that have been very carefully crafted by the athletic participation organizations. And Franklin County has its own participation bubble of schools. I'm sorry. Joe, you've got to wait till I'm done, okay? You don't understand that I'm on a call. And I'll take any questions at this point. No questions?
Yeah, I want to start off by just commending our effort for feeding our children and the families.
Thank you.
It just, the crisis just brings me to my knees. Like, I, today, it's, I don't know, I just, maybe it's new mom emotions, but like, it's just, it's getting worse, it's not getting better. And the fact that I know that we're providing seven days of meals to students, including gallons of milk, like, just makes me so grateful to be a part of this community and the thoughtfulness that goes into not just providing an education to our students, but really providing a holistic approach to making sure that not only do they have an education, but they have a whole life. And we don't just treat them like students, we treat them like whole people. And so I just want to say that. And that was my first, and then I got really pregnant, but my first Gratitude Friday was to our food service team because it's just such important work. So I just want to throw that out there. Anyone have any questions for Chair Praddy? Seeing none. All right, thank you so much for the update.
Well, I'm sure you're happy to be rid of me quickly with a long meeting tonight. Good luck, everyone, and happy holidays to everybody. Take care.
Never say never. It might not be that long.
Fingers crossed for you. Take care.
Next, we have communications from the mayor. Mayor, you are on mute. Hi, folks. Counselor Stempel, President Stempel, and all of you, I hope this makes you feel better. At least the first part of my remarks. We have had two very extraordinarily successful days of testing out at GCC. This is an event that we are able to put on by the city through the grace and the hard, hard work of GCC for hosting it and their security team, the extraordinary good work and diligent work and day-to-day, hour-to-hour work of our Health Department, our Fire and Police Department, our DPW. I don't know how many on this call were out there, but it was such a well-organized, well-done, well-attended event. And the FERCOG and AMR. There were so many people that collaborated on this event. It's such a testimony to the love and the care that Franklin County has for its people. So I just want to give you a report. The numbers of people who were tested tonight, today, over the two-week time period in total is well over 1,400 people, well over 2% of the county. There were 633 people yesterday. I think as recently as quite a few minutes ago, I received a report from Chief Strahan that there were well over 100 people today who were tested. We are on target to do a really good job when we open this up to the state. The state will be, has chosen us as one of the Western Massachusetts sites, and I'm very grateful for that because Franklin County is so often forgotten. But through the good work of our legislators and our office, we made Franklin County be a priority when they would open up state testing sites. So through the good graces of GCC, and I do want to commend Eve Solomon Fernandes and Alex of their Security Department for all the help they're giving us and will continue to give us, we will have a state testing site, hopefully, up and running by the end of this month, if not by the first part of January. And that will be indoors. Because I was out there mid to late afternoon. There were still cars there. The GCC nursing students, along with AMR people and FERCOG people, were working diligently. And it was just a great opportunity. So we will move that opportunity, that testing program from the state into, I think they plan to take it through March. So just wanted to let you know that Greenfield is doing what they can to make, make sure that everybody is healthy and safe, and we will continue to do that through March. So I hope to keep giving you updates on how that is going. Next item is, well, we have a storm coming. Now, I see that Director Warner is on the call, so if you want him to give you a little bit of an update, he certainly can. We are all set to take care of this storm, as we always are. Our DPW, again, a shining example of the hard work that they put in on behalf of the city of Greenfield. We started pre-treating the roads at about 5 o'clock today, and we will be ready and willing to get out there and plow. So I won't, if you want to hear from Marlo, you can do that after me. That follows on the fact that this is our first really, really cold spell and our, our need to take care of our homeless population. We do have a warming center set up with the, and a provider for that warming center set up. I don't know that it'll take care of us this evening, but it will for the future through this winter. So we are waiting to simply hear from CARES Act and FEMA people whether we can fund this through them. As far as our end is concerned, thanks to the hard work of MJ Adams and our Community and Economic Development Department, we are ready to take care of as many people as we can through our warming center. And the final thing that I want to say is I know you guys have an important vote to take tonight with regard to the fire station. I sincerely, on behalf of the citizens of Greenfield who need to be protected by our Fire Department and on behalf of our firefighters who do extraordinary work, I hope that you fund this project with the additional money. And I think that's all I have to say, but I will tell you that there are many people on this call this evening, from Chief Strahan to our OPM on the fire station project, to a number of other people who are here and willing and ready to answer your questions if you have additional questions. I appreciate the work and the hard work that each and every one of you do, and I think that's all I have to say this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I did want to note that Director Warner is quite the celebrity. I saw him on 22 News tonight. And so he made Greenfield very proud. I was like, yep, of course, Greenfield's ready because we always are. So thank you for that, Director Warner.
Really?
Yeah, so it looked very, you know, I just had so much pride in our community. So thank you so much. And I don't think anyone has questions about the storm, but if anyone does, by all means, let me know, and we can, we can do that. Counselor Ricketts would like to speak.
Yes, thank you, President Stempel. This is for the mayor. Mayor, I just want you to switch hats for a moment and go to School Committee. And I'm just wondering, with the cold weather that you, we were talking about earlier, did Green River ever get their heating system, and is that running?
Ooh, that's a somewhat hard question to answer because I think it's still in play, so to speak. But the good news is, earlier today, I saw Carol Collins on here, and she is the expert in all things Green River, along with Gerald, George Vandalinder. So Carol, if you would like to answer Penny's question, I would be more than happy to allow you to do that.
Certainly. I actually know that there was a request for proposals for a consultant to develop the system design, so those have been received back by the city and are being reviewed. And from that step, they will then go out and develop an RFP for an actual contractor to install the heating system. So it's still a month-long process to be completed, and actually, George Vandalinder is taking the lead on this, so that's about all I know at the moment.
Okay. I think the answer to your question, Counselor Ricketts, is we are not open yet, but we are, continue to work on that project. And at some point in the near future, we will be, that school will be open.
Oh, well, just follow up, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't even thinking about it ever really opening back up to students right away, but I know that it was a rush vote because they were worried about upcoming winter and what would happen if they didn't get a heating system in there. So they just wanted to protect the pipes and everything, so that's all I was wondering.
Looks like Carol could.
Again, that's. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to say that George has been winterizing the building while it has been out of use, and so that's been the case again so that it can get through until the system can get installed.
Okay, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes, Mayor Weeda Gardner, I know we've all been focused on the fire station for some very good reasons lately, and I know you've gotten a lot of questions about that. I do want to bring us back for a moment to the library project. You know, we did have a citizens' referendum on that, and it passed by a pretty wide margin, obliging us to build that library. Can you offer any assurances, you know, given what's happened lately, that the groundbreaking for the library will happen on schedule, or maybe we should say mostly on schedule?
Well, I like that qualification, Counselor Dolan, mostly on schedule. One never knows, but yes, we are on target to be able to break ground on the library project on April 21st. I would, given COVID, given all the other things that happen around these kinds of projects in terms of receiving temporary structures on time, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm certainly happy to answer any of these questions when the time comes. But yeah, we are definitely on target to break ground on the library on April 21st.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes, I was wondering whether there will be trash pickup and recycling pickup tomorrow, or will it be postponed until Friday?
Oh, boy. That is way above my pay grade, Marlo.
Yes, for this particular storm, we're on schedule at this point. We viewed the timing of the storm, and we suspect that we're going to have all the main roads or most of the roads opened up at least one time so that we could be successful in picking the trash and recycle. So yes, we're on schedule.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then while Director Warner's on the microphone, I, of course, there's a lot of competing priorities right now, and then now we have a pandemic. But I was curious if there's an update on the crosswalk lights that we voted in earlier this year. So I think one by the early, Academy of Early Learning, and another on Main Street. It just triggered my mind because I saw someone almost get hit again on Main Street where we had allocated those crosswalks. So curious, is that a spring project now that we're heading into winter? Or when can we look forward to some, I guess, traffic easing in those two necks of the woods?
So the Traffic Safety Improvement Project, everything ran a little slow, but we were able to get a good chunk of that installed late this fall, right up until this past week. The RFFBs, the Rapid Flashing Beacons at the crosswalks, were earmarked for coffee roasters, oak quartz at Elm Street, and Cumberland's in the area of Abishams. The Federal Street at Abishams is complete, Oak Quartz is complete. We weren't able to dig into the coffee roasters because there's specific grades, and there's a little engineering to be completed on that. We were worried about running out of time and getting cement poured, so we didn't want the sidewalks dug up for the winter there. The other portion of the project is rapid flash-in stop signs installed at the approach of Allen and Wells, which we all know has been a problem for many years. We have the oversized stop signs, but we've added blinking stop signs 200 feet in advance of the large stop signs, and we're going to add paint in the spring. The two school zones, we've started that, but we haven't installed. We're hoping that this winter we can, we can add to that, and that's Federal Street School and Middle Street School. So that pretty much summarizes the project.
Great, thank you very much.
Counselor Stempel?
You're welcome.
President Stempel?
Yes.
I did just receive numbers on the testing today, and I'm happy to report them if you would like that information. So first and foremost, I just, again, want to thank particularly the Greenfield Health Department and our interim Health Director Jennifer Hoffman, who has really, along with Police Chief Strahan, been the driving force behind this, this opportunity to test the people of Franklin County. And they've done an extraordinarily job, extraordinary job, along, of course, with all of our partners. So we tested 807 people today. We tested 629 people yesterday, so that is 1,436 people total in all of Franklin County. And we had 17 positive the first day. So out of that number, we can certainly update later on, we can certainly update later on, on the positives, but that is a good number. And I just want to remind people about testing. It is, at the end of the day, sort of a double-edged sword. It's a good thing, but when you see testing, you will see a rise in the numbers of positives. Don't take that as a bad thing, that is a good thing, because along with all of the other things that our extraordinary healthcare team and our emergency operations team does is they do a lot of contact tracing. So that helps us all understand where we're at and helps us isolate people and also make sure that they get the healthcare that they need. So I just want to say thank you again to the city of Greenfield, all of its partners, the FERCOG, GCC, AMR, DPW, Police Department, everybody. You know, we're all in this together, and we really, really want to make our entire county healthy and successful throughout this pandemic. So way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, could you, I think that's a very hot topic right now, is people want to be getting tested and doing their part to be responsible, but up until now, it's been really, really challenging to find a test site without getting a referral or jumping through hoops. Can you tell us a little bit more about this GCC testing site and what folks need to do in order to get in line, to get tested?
Well, this particular piece ended today, just in time for the storm tomorrow, because if we had added that third day, third day, which we had talked about, we would have had to cancel, and that would have been disappointing for a lot of people. So in terms of that, it was free. You had to register online. We are working again, nonstop, with our, with the state partner, our state partners, to set up the state site at GCC. Hopefully, by the end of the month, it will be an indoor site, so we don't have to worry, hopefully, about cancellations. It is expected that the state testing will go through March. And my guess is, we don't have all the details yet on how one might approach that, but it is free testing. So we're looking forward, and it is available to Franklin County in this, the state go-around. So I think I would have to defer to our next meeting, and certainly I will keep the council updated in the interim via email or whatever on how we're doing in terms of setting it up. But I think we're, we're on target. Interim Health Director Jennifer Hoffman is pretty much in contact daily with the state on how to get that set up. And GCC has so generously offered the GCC site one more time, only indoors.
Great, thank you so much. Counselor Ricketts?
Yes, thank you. The first thing I would like to say is that I do notice, like, a private chat, but if you could please, anyone who wants to speak to me one-on-one, just email me or call me after the meeting. I will stay up, no matter what time we get done. I just can't pay attention and listen to everyone and try to answer private chat at the same time, so I'm very sorry. I'm not ignoring you, I'm just, I'm just busy. I just want to go back to something that the mayor said, and then something Counselor Dolan said. For the mayor, as we're all in this together, as much as tonight is all about the Fire Department, you know, I just want to take this moment to just say, as Counselor Stempel did, about, you know, the school system, the teachers that are doing stuff. I saw an issue that came up, and I reached out to our Police and Fire Chief, and they got right back to me. And so it was, it was great. So during the pandemic, there's so much going on. Our Health Director, I think it's changed lots of people's spirits just driving through the fairgrounds and going down our Main and Federal Street. So there is just so much going on. Our Recreation Department, the DPW, I mean, you cannot stop counting the number of people that are really working and doing a great job spirit-wise right now for this community. And I wanted to dovetail off something Counselor Dolan brought up because we were both on council when Safe City and the Library came up, and it went to a referendum. And, you know, I don't know if tonight's vote will go that same avenue, but, you know, I hope that, you know, we'll be able to figure it all out because special elections cost so much money. And so I just hope that, you know, people are really paying attention and listening tonight and that the conversation, I think, will have a really tonight, and that the conversation, I think, will have a really robust and rich discussion among councilors tonight, and I hope that that is going to help people fully understand where we're coming from. And if people tuned into Ways and Means last night, I think it was the best meeting through this whole process that really discussed how we got here. And so I hope people really got to hear that. So that's all I wanted to say. And really, please email me, and I will, I will focus on you later. I do promise. Thank you.
I don't know where they went. All right. I don't think we have any other city employees tonight, but as the mayor said, we have a league of folks on the ready in case we have questions later on in our meeting. Now I'm going to open up our public comment, and I'm going to go ahead and get started. The clerk has been so kind to invite people to sign into our virtual sign-in sheet, and we've already had quite a few folks sign in. Everyone's going to have three minutes to speak tonight. Don't be afraid to yield your time if you don't want to use those full three minutes. I'm going to go ahead and get started with Dan Babbitts. If you are ready to speak, your three minutes starts now.
Hello. Thank you very much.
And please also state your name and your address for the record.
Donald Babbitts, 131 Worcester Way.
Thank you.
I want to start off with that I fully support the building of a new fire station. I have toured the facility, and there's no question in my mind, it shouldn't be in anybody else's mind either, that a new station is definitely in order. And what I do not support is the additional $6 million that it's going to take to make this come about, because the way I'm looking at it, it's all to accommodate the new library. So that $6 million, along with the $20 million originally, comes up to $26 million for the library project. Seventeen million of what the city is going to have to foot. Now, as I would like to go on to the Beacon Street site. Now, that was supposedly a prime choice at the time, and then because the state would not clean up the area, it was off the table. I'm not sure why we can't take and clean up that area, whatever it cost, $2.5 million, instead of going to spending that money on a temporary housing for the firefighters. If you leave that property alone and build it someplace else, it's still going to be an eyesore, and it's still going to be just worthless. This has happened at, down on Deerfield Street, the old Tap and Die. That was revitalized, and you've got an absolutely beautiful building, the harbors down there now. And I don't see why we can't do the same thing. As far as for the library, why can't we just ask for an extension? You know, these, I don't know the answer to these, but to me, that would seem the thing to do. Also, finally, I've heard many comments as far as the urgency to build a new fire station. Yet, as I understand, reading in the paper, it's not to be built until 2023. That, to me, is not very urgent. I really, really feel that the fire station, like I said, I toured it, and I sympathize with those guys that have to work there, day in and day out. And I sympathize even more with them if they get thrown into a temporary building, which is not going to be the ideal situation by any means. So that's why I'm really asking all of you people, please, just to do the right thing, build the fire station now and the library later. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And I apologize for calling you Dan. Next, we have Sandy Thomas.
Oops. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I guess I can get the video on. Okay, great. So Sandy Thomas, I am on Orchard Street, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I very much support a permanent fire station, since public safety should be our top priority. Voting for the extra funding tonight, however, will not get us that station. Given the realities of Greenfield's economy with great uncertainties about state budgets, I work for the state, I know how tight it is, all in the midst of a raging pandemic, it feels irresponsible and actually makes no sense to me to vote for more funds than we most likely will have available to us. Everything has changed since three huge municipal projects were discussed. I believe that now is the time to pivot and construct the buildings in the right order. I would hate to see our firefighters stuck in a smaller-than-needed temporary structure for years to come because we may not have the funding. And as taxpayers, many of whom have lost their jobs and their businesses in this pandemic, can't afford to bail the town out. I also understand that we have to pay for costly repair to our sewer lines in the very near future. So I ask you to make decisions tonight that will provide Greenfield with a much-needed permanent fire station, but please, I ask you to vote no for temporary one. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Don Morin, please.
So since I stated my stance on the fire station at the special meeting list.
Hi, Don. I don't mean to cut you off, but can you please state your name and your address?
Yes, Don Morin, Hope Street. Am I all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So since I stated my stance on the fire station at the special meeting last Friday, I have been in communication with Mr. Masaccio, the owner of Coombs &amp; Maine, and therefore I have earned information that the council has not been privy to. That being said, I want you all to be aware that he has confirmed there's still more negotiating that needs to take place, and it's not as close to a done deal as you have been led to believe. Therefore, I am again, once again urging the council to table both the vote for the $6 million and to start, to halt the start of the temporary station on Hope Street until that permanent location has been purchased. We need to do this in the right order. Not doing things in the right order is what got us in this predicament in the first place with the library and the fire station. Have we not learned our lesson? Councilors should be voting in the best interest of the fire department, period. And tabling it is a way that allows our firefighters to still be eligible for that $6 million without putting them at a great risk of getting stuck in the temporary sheds in a parking lot. By tabling it, you're not saying no, you're saying, let's get this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Next, we have Ann Mayo.
And it is Ann Mayo, 143 Greenfield, sorry, Wall Street on Greenfield. And so, good evening, folks. And I actually would like you to approve the money for the new fire station, though many of us were disappointed that the Rydell Street location fell through. It wasn't Greenfield's fault that it did, and the fire station is definitely an absolutely needed and long overdue improvement. And thank you all, and hope everyone stays safe.
Thank you, Ann. Next, we have Ellen Thompson, please.
Hi. 54 High Street, Ellen Thompson, Greenfield, Mass. Do not spend any more of the people's money for a temporary fire station. You seem to be under the impression that people are doing well in this town. They're not. This is a very bad time to be piling on debt after debt after debt after debt. The people are responsible for this. Your town offices are not even open. No money to run the schools. Where did that money go? I am in total agreement with Sandy Thomas, Mr. Babbitts, and Don Morin. Wake up, people. Wake up.
Thank you. Next, we have Loise St. Germain. Lois St. Germain?
Hi. It's Lois St. Germain. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Lois.
I would like to say, Lois St. Germain, Chapman Street, Greenfield, Mass. Please vote no to the giving of any funds towards the temporary fire station. A permanent, much-needed fire station should be built first, then revisit the building of the non-needed library later. Thank you. That's all I have to say. I think it's a pure waste of money.
Thank you. Kaitlin Von Schmidt.
Hi. I'm Kaitlin Von Schmidt, Congress Street in Greenfield, and I've spoken before. I just want to reiterate my support for the money for the fire station. Yes, it's not happening perfectly the way everyone wanted. However, that is not the fault of the people working on the project now. Those are because of things that happened in the past, and the best way for us to get out of this situation is to push through and make the expenditures we need to make. Public infrastructure costs actual money, and putting it off just makes it cost a lot more actual money. So I hope that the councilors will see their way to voting yes on the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaitlin. Next, we have Justin Twaddell, please.
It's pronounced Twaddell.
Twaddell. I know this.
Quite right.
Mom brain.
You're not the first nor the last to do that. So Justin Twaddell, Congress Street here in Greenfield, calling in, videoing in to also show my support for the appropriating of the money to build the fire station, much needed addition to the capital improvements of the town. One of the reasons why we're in this situation is the length of time it's taken us to make some of these, much like the library, which is not even a purpose-built library, but a 100-year-old building. So it's never a convenient time. I think the city council does have an excellent grasp on the general economic, socioeconomic status of the city and the inhabitants of it, and aren't spending our money foolishly. So I support the appropriation of the money. Thank you very much. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you so much, Justin. And last on our sign-up sheet is Stephanie Duke Close. If anyone, if anyone else would like to speak, please feel free to continue signing in to the chat.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
First off, congratulations, Ashley, on your baby.
Thank you.
Calling in, obviously, to voice my opinion on the allocation of the $6 million for the library, I mean, for the fire station. I am in total support of giving the firefighters a permanent station. The temporary station is an issue I have, is the topic I have an issue with. We should be allocating that money that they want to appropriate to a temporary station to cleaning up the Rydell Street property in order to commence the firehouse that needs to be built. I'm asking tonight for you to table it, table the allocation of the $6 million, as there are no contracts that are completely signed, sealed, and delivered. I'm sorry. I was distracted by my cat. I would like to echo Ms. Tom, Mr. Babbitts, Ms. Morin, Lois St. Germain, and Ellen Thompson remarks in regards to projects. People can't afford to keep having their taxes raised, raised, and raised in order for temporary stations to be put up and then torn down so that someone could be moved from one place to another, and my fear is the firefighters will stay there for many years. I mean, the project's already not slated to start, what, till 2023? We need to start appropriating the money that you tax us on to the projects that the people feel are the most important, because if we're down to a very tight budget, then the priority is the fire station, and it should be a permanent one, not a waste of money to put a temporary one on a parking lot in a courthouse, which then creates problems for handicap accessibility or people trying to come from the parking garage, which is what I had heard was the solution to the handicap parking for the courthouse. If you're going up that hill, it's going to be quite difficult for someone to go up that hill in the winter in a wheelchair. Doesn't seem handicapped accessible to me. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next, we have Amy Moscaratolo. She signed in privately to me, so Amy, if you can just state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Certainly happy to. I'm Amy Moscaratolo, 43 Country Club Road. Thank you again, councilors, for providing the opportunity on Friday evening to hear from residents regarding the fire station funding and tonight as well. I shared my thoughts on Friday in support of additional funding, and upon further reflection, I'd like to add the following thoughts. As a lifelong pioneer of Valley and 34-year Greenfield resident, it seems that every time Greenfield seems to make steps forward, we get thrown backwards. People have learned that they can hold up progress in the name of their own agendas. We're the largest city in the county and serve far more than just Greenfield's residents. Neighboring communities look to us as a leadership community. To echo Counselor Ricketts, we have so much to be proud of here. Many families have moved here for the town's services and our vibrant community. I urge councilors to approve the additional funding for this important project. As I said on Friday, I urge you to inhale the future and exhale the past. I yield my time.
Thank you, Amy. Danielle Letourneau, please.
My name is Danielle Letourneau. I live at 40 Garfield Street in Greenfield, Mass. I also do work for the mayor's office as the chief of staff to the mayor. I wasn't going to speak because I'm kind of here at some work, but I'm going to speak as a citizen of Greenfield. I've lived here for nearly 20 years, even though I grew up across the river in Turner's Falls. I urge you to vote yes on the $6 million appropriation tonight. I served on the city council myself from 2006 to 2011, and so I understand a little bit of how hard it is to make these decisions when you have constituents concerned about their taxes and about how money is being spent and about how you're making these decisions. I just want to remind everyone, this is a vote on a specific appropriation for a project. This isn't a vote on a specific site. So I understand that people have concerns, that we don't have a contract. It's actually not the right order. The order to do this is to make sure you understand the scope of a project, how much that project will cost, and then you appropriate that money. At that point, you can go out and then find the, sign the contracts and finish the deals. When we, when the city decided to build the library, it was, it was part of an operation that had gotten switched around at that time. I know that many years ago, there was, and this history lesson was given, actually, at Ways and Means last night, so I'm not going to do it justice, but originally, the plan was to build a fire station first. Various things happened. That did not happen, and yet the grant was funded for the library, and so that's kind of pulled ahead. This is where we are, and I think that these two projects together are a huge infrastructure investment for our town. It will increase the ability for people to have quality of life. It'll increase our safety for the fire station. It's not ideal, of course, that we'll have a temporary station, but I hear, I heard from firefighters on Friday night that they are interested, and they think this is a great idea, and they are ready to get out of the substandard building and move forward. So I urge you to vote yes, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Donna Rivers, we'll give it a try. So let's test to see if I can hear you, Donna.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Yeah, okay. So my name is Donna Rivers. I live at 95 Columbus Avenue here in Greenfield. I'm a former school librarian in Greenfield, and I no longer have a job there because there really aren't too many librarians left in Greenfield. I am here to support the appropriation of money for the temporary fire station. I feel like it's a domino effect of making sure that we have all of the things in place that need to happen, and I feel like we keep, as a town, just by the process that we keep going through, I feel like we keep shooting ourselves in the foot. And I lovingly call Greenfield the little town it almost has, because I feel like we're so close to making ourselves so much better than we are right now all the time, and something always gets in the way of that. And I feel like the- And I feel like the, the fire station moving obviously has to happen. The library has to happen. So many people rely on the library in our community. And I think that's become quite clear with the COVID crisis. And someone earlier was speaking about handicap accessibility for other areas of town and how that would be impacted. And one of the really big problems with the library right now is that it is not and cannot be made handicapped accessible without a tremendous amount of investment. And as someone else more eloquently than me said earlier, we will be spending more money later down the line if we don't do it now. If we don't take advantage of the grant we've been given to build the library, we're not going to see that again. And that, to me, is such an important piece of our downtown area that it's, it's just not okay to kiss it goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna. Jen Stromston.
Hi, everyone. I spoke last week, so I'm not going to repeat things that I said. Then I do want to thank just the speaker right before me. He said a lot of what I feel like I hadn't said last week, and you said it really eloquently. I'm Jen Stromston. I've lived here for 17 years or something. I've been on a lot of committees and I'm currently on the Public Safety Fire Station Committee and subcommittees. I wanted-
And Jen, can you also say your address for the record?
Yes, all right, 40 Russell Street. Thank you. Liz Gilman has shown us that we can afford this. And I really, I hope that people who have questions will take the time to go back to those and watch those webinars or request whatever documents you can't find. It's, it's really good, detailed information. We should all understand this stuff better. I'm embarrassed I didn't before this process. And I think, you know, it would all lead to better conversations in the future. A point I want to make is that the original $10 million was never enough. It really wasn't years ago. That wasn't based on anything specific. It wasn't then and it isn't now. The $6 million is not because of the library. It's the rest of what's needed to do this kind of a project. Why can't we delay the library? The previous speaker spoke to that. And we already had a delay. So thanks to an attempt to overturn the council vote to fund the library, it's part of why we have less leeway now. I don't want to go back and relitigate the past. But frankly, this kind of relitigating the past approach is, is why this is so difficult. For us to just move forward. We are working with project managers. We call them OPMs. That's another one of these acronyms that we often get used to that bring in projects on time and under budget. So when folks speculate that things won't go as planned, that's really speculation. That's not based on their track record, and that's not based on this city's track record. I want to be clear that I'm also just really surprised at the number of people who think that, you know, we can just toss out the library, redo this whole thing at this time. You know, that is, that would be irresponsible if we could, and it's, and it's not possible. We have to look at what's in front of us now. And we have to, if you're worried about the process, then please ask questions about the process. Because I think that's exactly what we have these public hearings for, to make sure there's transparency. And it's much detail because everyone in the public deserves to understand how decisions are being made and why. That's not the same thing as being able to go back and relitigate the past. The one thing I want to really just say is I, this is one of those nights where I'm like having sort of bad flashbacks because I feel like the passion that comes out when people want to stop something is sort of emblematic of how we get in our own way. You know, it's whatever the inverse of inspiring is. And I, I want us to summon that passion to create something together. This is not the time to table a vote. Putting things off is how we got here. Communities are built on investment. Investments are always hard. A lot of the hardest investment this country ever did was done in the back of the depression. You know, that our grandparents struggled to get through and then sacrificed further to give us the schools, the infrastructure, the water systems, the parks, the playgrounds, the libraries that we have now. You know, and they didn't, like, they didn't crumble about not being able to go shopping enough. You know, my grandparents never ate out in their entire lives. You know, and they are proud of the country that they helped to build. And they came here from another country to do it. So I just think it's time for us to have some pride and some courage and to take the long view. My home is worth less if this town has lousy schools, lousy libraries, a lousy fire department because it can't attract good firefighters because it's in a terrible building. So my biggest personal asset is at stake when we don't invest in this. So is our entire tax base. So keep on getting not like nickel-dining tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. I don't see anybody else signed up. We have had a lot of opportunities for public comment, and so I understand why we might not have as many as we thought to tonight. So at this point in time, I'm going to check the chat box one more time. One more person would like to speak, and that's David Moscaratolo. Name and address, please, David.
Hi, David Moscaratolo, 43 Country Club Road. I just want to make a few comments. I want to thank Jen as a member of the building committee for what she just said. The bottom line is this. If, the more we wait, the more anything is going to cost us. If we think putting off a fire station for another year or two is going to save us money, it's not. If you look at the cost of fire stations in municipal buildings across Massachusetts, they're expensive. $19 to $20 million is reasonable if you look at other towns. Next year, it's going to cost us $25 million. The year after that, it's going to cost us $30 million, and so on and so forth. We keep putting things off that needs to stop. I've heard a lot of opinions. I've opposed projects throughout the years and things that the town has brought up. But when I come to the council, I come with facts, true facts. I've heard a lot of opinions tonight, but I haven't heard a lot of true facts from folks. If you, if I'm going to come to a meeting, I'm going to bring facts. The fact is, is that now is the time to do this project. We can afford this project. It's not going to get any cheaper. We have awesome teams and we have awesome people and managers and project managers on these projects. And they are going to come in on the budget. We've proven that. It's happened with the high school. It will happen with the library. It will happen with the fire station. And I am proud to say tonight that the RFP for not, it's, it's, it's not, it's not a shed. It's a living quarters for the firemen and women, has gone out to the public for information. The RFP is out for the living quarters. We are on track and we are on schedule with this. And everybody feels proud and feels positive that we've made a lot of headway over the last three or four months. Please vote for this project. Please vote for supporting this project in the funding. Thank you, councilors, for your hard work.
Thank you, David. Amy McMahon, please.
This is Amy McMahon at 8 Ausgood Street. And I just want to speak as a downtown resident and business owner who pays taxes at both locations. I'm all in on the downtown. And I believe that we will rebound from this pandemic and even more so with your support of a modern library and fire station in the downtown. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy. I see no more names. So at this point in time, I'm going to open our public hearing on that appropriation at 7:59 PM and ask for Vice President Wheeler to please read our second reading on page 15.
Thank you, President Stempel. Public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 16, 2020, at 7:00 PM via WebEx to receive input on the following. Appropriate $6 million for the construction of a new fire station. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, December 16, 2020, at 7:00 PM via WebEx. Materials can be obtained from the city clerk's office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Ashley Stempel, Ray, Greenfield City Council President. City Council, second reading, December 16, 2020. Appropriate $6 million for the construction of a new fire station.
Thank you. And if anyone, we had a lot of public comment. And, and so this might seem a little redundant, but the public hearing is also a time to speak on this appropriation. So before I go ahead and move to our first motion, which would essentially close the public hearing, I want to make sure that there isn't anyone else who would like to speak to this item during our public hearing time. Seeing none. And, and just to iterate too, like, this is, there were some questions as to why we would have public comment on Friday. And it's because we moved to public hearing and then immediately to the vote, and that's when we closed the public hearing. So we wanted to make sure that folks had plenty of time. So, Councilor, or Vice President Wheeler, you will read on page 15. And then I will close the public hearing now at 8:01 PM.
Thank you. I move that it be ordered that an additional sum of $6 million be appropriated for the construction of a new fire station. And to meet said appropriation, transfer $1 million from Fund 1627 bond premium. And the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $5 million pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other enabling statute. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of this project. And further, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, the premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes hereunder, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for the project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
Thank you. And that was a second from Ricketts, I believe?
Yes.
Thank you. So here we are. Discussion from councilors, please. And I'm going to ask that folks don't raise their hands because I am not as sharp as I usually am tonight. But I do see a report from committee, from Vice President Wheeler, from our very, like someone said, our very excellent Ways and Means meeting yesterday.
Thank you, President Stempel. Yes, I, I thought it was thorough. I appreciated how much attendance we had, and we had a lot of good questions for it. The report from committee was a unanimous, positive one in favor of the additional $6 million. The committee went over various alternate options and did not find that any of them would save the city money. In the end, it found that moving forward as the mayor has proposed is in the interest of the city.
Did you find it? Thank you. Before we move forward, I'm going to ask again, so folks, if you aren't speaking, which is me and whoever I call on to speak, please mute yourself. This is a very important vote, and I want to eliminate all distractions. So next, we have Councilor Gwynn, please.
Thank you. First, I know everyone's worked really hard on this project and it's, and it's coming to this. And watching what all of you have put together and all the comments are, have been a very important piece. This vote got right to the, to the crux of spending money and what people were worried about. And I started to look at this from a couple of different elements. We need to build a new fire station. We need a new fire station. We can't fix the one we have. If we fix the one we have, it's going to cost us nearly what it, what it's going to do that we're asking tonight, $6, $7 million to fix what we have, and we're still going to have a building that's substandard for our firefighters. When we read this just now, Councilor Wheeler did not read $6 million for a temporary fire station. He said a new fire station. We've got to look as this as a positive thing moving forward. I was so upset about watching the tax rate and what are people going to think? We're spending a lot of money. And then Liz Gilman explained something that I think was very important. The way that municipal finances works, when you bake in these costs over the 30-year bonds and the borrowings, we are not going to see any increase more than we're going to see anyways. Money is spent in a municipality. This just becomes part of that spend. And I understand people will tell you, we just heard from a couple tonight. We didn't hear from many on Friday. There were 16 in favor, and I think two spoke that they, they weren't in favor or similar to that. But we have to remember two votes. One was, the library vote was a, went to public referendum and was unanimous in that vote. Second of all, as we're talking about people not having money, the citizens of Greenfield just voted themselves a 1% tax increase in a two-to-one margin. They had an opportunity to vote no on the CPA, and they didn't. They voted themselves a month ago, a 1% increase. That 1% that they just voted themselves is more direct than they're going to see from improving our structure by having a new library, not one built during George Washington's days, and a new fire station. So to me, people in a two-to-one margin increased their own taxes recently. We cannot keep our firefighters in a substandard location. You have to decide, do we want a fire station or do we want a library? It is time to move forward. This $6 million is not going to change anything. The mayor needs to go and negotiate in good faith, and she has to have the power behind it to go and do these things. I will be voting tonight unless someone changes my mind in the next few minutes in favor of this because this is the right step at the right time to get these projects done for Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gwynn. Councilor Dolan, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. A lot of hay has been made about the temporary fire station, and that's understandable to a certain extent. It's certainly an expense that I would like to avoid if we could. But I think it's worth noting that, of course, fire services are services that cannot be interrupted. And because of that, even if we were demolishing the fire station and building a new one on the same site, a temporary fire station would be required. Temporary fire stations are extremely common. Just a quick Google search turned up Needham, Walpole, Lexington, Onset, Chelsea, Southborough, Everett, Billericay, Cambridge, Westwood, Essex, Franklin, and I'm sure that the list goes on. So while it's something that we certainly should avoid if we can, it's, it's not something that's at all uncommon in a big construction project like this. We're in a little bit of a more complicated situation because we're shuffling buildings around. But it's needed for the same reason, because those services cannot be interrupted. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dolan. Councilor Elmer, please.
Hi, yeah. As I said last night, this has been a journey for me. I was appalled when I discovered that the $10 million that we'd appropriate for the, we'd appropriated for the fire station was nowhere near what we needed. And I, I'm a reporter by training, so I made it my job to understand how that happened. To really, to basically figure out what the situation is, what hand we've been dealt. And I figured, I, I feel like I, I have a pretty good grasp on it. The, the people were saying, why don't we, if we could, why don't we delay the project? Well, if we, and ask for the money later. Well, if we could, we would. I, I called Senator Commerford's office, and we went through it and what, and, and found out what was possible and what wasn't possible. And a few months' delay could be done, but the kind of multi-year delay that people, that we would have to to build the permanent fire station first isn't available. It just can't be done. I talked to the owner of the, of the Coombe Street Market. As far as he's concerned, he signed a letter of agreement and the deal is done. I don't know what he told Dawn, but, and, and I, you know, along with a lot of other people, we've grilled the finance director to, to make sure we understood how the bond, you know, how, how the bonds retire as new ones come on and what the impact on taxes is. And I believe her. She says we can afford it. And so, so the bottom line is we, we let two really important buildings for the town fall into disrepair. We've put off the, the, the investment in infrastructure- We've put off the, the, the investment in infrastructure that the town needs. And now it's, now's the time. We have to vote this money. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you councillor Elmer. Councillor Gilmore, please.
Hi. I'm really glad that I got to hear councillor Elmer's comments, because I, I also spoke to the owner of that property at Maynard Coombs, and he told me he was really concerned about following through with this deal. He, he was asking me for assurances that I could not provide to him. I told him I am not on that committee. And if I was on that committee, I couldn't talk to him because of conflicts of interest, and I encouraged him to talk to his real estate agent and his lawyer, because I felt like that was the only ethical thing that I could do. It did raise a red flag for me, though. If he's having second thoughts about that site, I'm really worried about spending this money. I'm also very concerned about the optics here. As one of our neighbors pointed out, the people who have been writing to us and coming to public comment in favor of putting this money forward because of the library have all been people who are on the building committees for the library, or they have already been, you know, part of the Greenfield, the Friends of the Greenfield Public Library. And, you know, when people write to me, and we've been getting, you know, hundreds of emails about this, but I do sort of wait this. When I have someone who writes to me who has never written to me before, I take notice. And I have a lot of folks who have written to me saying, I voted for the library. I'm really concerned about this. I want this. But we're in a pandemic right now, and I'm scared. And I've changed my mind. And I actually got a few calls over the weekend from people who have, you know, one in particular, you know, we have, our, our kids are friends. She thanked me for bringing this up, because she's scared to sort of voice these concerns, because it's really unpopular to come out against this project, especially since people had voted for it. And I think that, given all of this uncertainty, I mean, I would really welcome a motion to table, just because I think the optics look really bad. We had a Recorder article come out the same day that we had public hair, uh, public comments on Friday that made people feel like public comment was useless, and I saw some stuff on social media. I'm sure the rest of you folks saw some stuff. I got phone calls and emails about that. Specifically, people talking about the fix being in. And I don't, you know, whether that's true or not, we don't need that perception in town. I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing and that we're not focusing on, I mean, the vote's important, but that happened pre-pandemic. And I, I, I think we really, really need to take a breath and think about that stuff. So that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you councillor Gilmore. This is why social media is bad. The purpose behind Friday's public comment was to allow for more public comment. And if anyone thinks there was anything else, and that I would, I would prefer to be on a call on a Friday evening than with my newborn child, because something was a fix, then they can email me personally and we'll talk about it. So I didn't know, I wasn't aware that people felt that way. So I'm, I'm offering myself up to anyone who has any questions about Friday's public comment.
No, that's directed at you. I, I, I just, I saw these thoughts kind of bubbling up, and I wanted to sort of give voice to that, because I think there are some folks who have opinions, and they don't come in here for public comment. And I'm, I'm worried about that. I, I think that they should feel comfortable talking to us. And I, I worry that they don't. But no, that's not you personally. I know that you care.
I think we all care. And so I think that's just, and, and I think that here we are, and, yeah, I, I, I can say that I believe that each and every single councillor cares very strongly about this. And I want to thank everyone for the work that they've put into this. And so hopefully, we won't table tonight. But if that happens, so be it. Because I think not only do the people on this call, but the community deserves moving this forward. And please don't use the chat box to make comments. Next, we have councillor Mayo, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, upon hearing the, the mayor speak and the financial director speak, I feel more confident than I have in many a year with the numbers that they've been talking about. And it's not just been once that they've been talking about it. They've been talking about it for at least two months every time we've asked. And there was a time where at least three or four councillors asked the same question. We got the very same answer from both mayor and the finance director, one, one right after the other. So that just hammers home the point for me that we're financially, we're in step with affording these projects. I agree with many of the speakers that said, it's time to move forward and not backward. And the count shows that. The count that I did on Friday shows that there were more yeses, and tonight, that's the same thing. And the letters, there were a couple of letters that I read and, and responded to that they, they were for the library, but changed their mind because they were getting apprehensive about the, the money, and they didn't feel as, as good about the money. They either lost a job or something of that, that changed the dynamics for them. But for me, the numbers, it all comes down to numbers. We, we, we had the majority of yeses on Friday, the majority of yeses today, plus the, the, the good feeling that I feel like Greenfield can afford this. I, I, I think it's time to move forward. There's no question about it.
Thank you councillor Mayo. Councillor Jarvis, please.
Thank you, Ashley, and congratulations to you. I'd like to just dispel some of the stuff that I've been hearing out there. Number one, I sat next to the library for 30 years of my career. I watched people go in and out of the library. I watched people use it on a daily basis. They are not homeless people going in there to warm themselves, to stay in the bathrooms. They're not drug users. I see young children, mothers, grandmothers, that, that go to the library and stop at the fire station to come into the fire station to visit the firefighters afterwards. For 30 years, that had happened. I, I see people that are handicap accessibility, trying to use the ramp, trying to get in the library, that we literally had to help over broken sidewalks and curbs to get into the library. I know it's not about, all about the library. It's about moving our firefighters with this $6 million. They are in an antiquated building that has fallen down, and if I was an inspector, I would be shutting the building down. It was my job for three and a half years to be an inspector. And that building is in such disarray. If it was a private building, it would have lots of issues and lots of code violations that would need to be fixed immediately. The library would be shut down. Would not be open, would not be open to the public. So at the end of the day, if we don't fund this, here's what happens, people. We don't have a library. It's closed for good, until we can find the money to renovate it. It's going to cost a lot more. We've had experts that, that are a lot smarter than we are. We have architects and engineers that are a lot smarter than we are in those fields that tell us it's going to cost us more. We can choose to believe them or not. We're going to have a fire station that's going to be delayed, and we're going to add, add another $10 million to the cost of the fire station. I'm in construction. I've seen bids. I've prepared bids. I know how bids work. They're going to go up, people. Believe me. Pandemic or not, they're going to go up. We need to move forward for both the library and, and most of all, our firefighters. And as far as people, you know what? We all have a voice. If we want our voices to be heard, we don't do it in social media. We've had plenty, they, our public has had plenty of chances to voice their opinion. If we don't use our voice, voice, I've once, I've once said, if you don't vote for a president, then you have no, no complaint about who we end up for president. So you had choices, you had chances. We didn't hear your voices. I, I certainly, I, I've not received a ton of, a ton of emails. I've not received a bunch of phone calls. Maybe that's because people know what side of the fence I sit on. It's no secret. I'm loyal to my firefighters. They're a brotherhood to me. They're special to me, and I'll do whatever I can to protect their interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Jarvis. I don't see anyone else here in the chat box. Of course, we have been mauling this over for several months, years. But would anyone else like to speak? I think I saw Mayor, Mayor Forgé, councillor Forgé. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll answer to either, whatever. This has really been a real star-crossed project from beginning to end. Nothing seems to have happened in an order that we can all relate to. I think I've changed my mind about a dozen times, trying to really make the best decision that I can to represent the people. Councillor Gwynn did mention that we've received some other votes at this point. The library passed, the CPA passed. It's majority-based, and people are telling us that this is what they want. We would be remiss in our responsibilities not to listen to that majority. And as a councillor, it's not my responsibility to tell the people who voted for this that it was, for lack of a better word, wrong for them to do this. I've heard a lot of people talk about taxes increasing. Can we actually afford this? That has been one of my major concerns all along. But what I want people to understand, and, and when, when a taxpayer says to me, you know, I'm maxed out, I don't know, I can't afford it, I don't know what's going to happen, I want them to know that I'm listening to what they are saying. But what I suspect, besides they're concerned about paying their bills, is I think they're also saying, we need transparency, we need thoughtful process. I want to know where my tax dollars are going. I want to know that my, that the revenue coming into the town is being spent appropriately and wisely. I want to know if there's an issue with an office with revenue collection or whatever. I will tell people right now, that will be my goal next year, is a better accountability. And I hope I am going to be on the Ways and Means Committee next year, but I will work with the council to see if we can get better accountability and get that information out to people. My other comment tonight is that I want to say that if, if there are things that come forward, like delays or citizen petitions, which of course is what every citizen can do to exercise their right to be heard, it's just going to delay the project further, and it's about the fire station. Like councillor Jarvis, I need to know that the fire station is going to go through, and I don't want any more delays in making this happen. I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here. I will be voting yes on this question.
Thank you councillor Forgé. And my apologies to councillor Disorga. I went out of order because I was distracted. So councillor Disorga, please.
Perfectly okay. That's fine. Thank you. So I feel as if the fire department was the most neglected department in Greenfield until this year, when we voted to get them the equipment that they needed to, to do their, to make their jobs easier and, and to do it more safely. They, they've operated in a substandard environment for many years, and it, it's time to change that. I've, like Chris said, are, it's a scary time. It's a sad time and a scary time. And the economic outlook is uncertain. For those, I did have a lot of people write to me, for those of you with economic concerns, I hear them too. We're going to be, we're paying for the high school, and we have the retirement, and we'll be doing two building projects. But I think that there are two building projects that need to be done. And I, I think that we have good people who are in place, who are working and planning for new sources of revenue here in town. So I didn't create this plan, and I wish that the firemen were only moving one time. But, but I'm going to vote to fund the new fire station to ensure that our firemen are not stuck in a temporary structure. Those firefighters keep us safe every single day, and I feel like I have an obligation to put them in a safe and sanitary home, because that's what they deserve. And I, I urge my fellow councillors as we go forward to make sure that this tax burden is equitably shared, because I think that that is something that we really need to look at, to make sure that we're looking at how our assessments are done, so that people who can't afford that are able to pay for, pay for this. So that is something I'm going to urge our fellow councillors as we go into the new year, because I have had many people call. But I'm just going to go back to the same thing about the firemen. The firefighters keep us safe, and I want to keep them safe, and I'm going to be a yes.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor Hirschfeld, please.
Yes, I would like to say I'm in favor of the $6 million, the fire station. I don't think we can wait. We can't put it off for another month or two. We're on a very short timetable to get the temporary fire station built before the library construction begins. They'll need a lay-down area for the steel. I assume that will be where the fire station is now located. So we really can't put this off, and I feel that we've, we just need to move forward. We've got a really good city, and I'm very proud of it. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hirschfeld. Councillor Bottomley is next.
Yes, thank you. I don't think I could be any more eloquent than the councillors that have spoken. I think this is an absolute need, and I think people should understand it's, it's appalling that it's taken decades to make this happen. And I, I highly encourage my councillors to vote yes to make this funding happen. And I also heard another thing that was disturbing. I hope people do not feel that public comment is useless. Being a new councillor, it's really important to me. And before I was a councillor, I've been inspired by the people that have spoken before the council. We have an incredible community of intelligent people that research these issues and help us. And it's helpful to me now as a councillor when people call me, and that includes when they disagree with me. So we've tried to examine these issues on Ways and Means, and it's really complicated, and there's a lot of meetings. All of us can't even get to every single meeting that happens on the council. But I hope people understand they can come to us, and I'm happy in any capacity to try to explain my understanding of the situation, and to know that public comment is incredibly important. So, thank you.
Thank you so much councillor Bottomley for reiterating that, because that was specifically Vice President Wheeler and I's intention for having as much public comment and as much time on this issue as possible, because you're absolutely right. It's the community who, while we educate ourselves with the experts, sometimes they sometimes the experts are also the community. And so thank you to everyone who showed up time and time again, who's called, who's emailed. It's really helpful and it does matter. Counselor Ricketts, please. Oh, Penny, you're muted.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so I want to say, I've been interested in town government so long that I remember when it was town government. I remember when a new fire station came up, it was Board of Selectmen. And so we fast-forward to now, when we're this close. This is the closest I have seen in a long time. And I have to own that I was on the council when I voted no for a new fire station. That would have been a fire station and possibly a public safety commission. We really did like the Maury and Schmidt family, Refill Savings Bank. We just weren't sure about the owner and about how everything was going to work out. So at that time, I voted no for that. So for some people who felt like we put the library before the fire station, we absolutely did not. I was part of that, I own it. If I could do it all over again, I probably still would do the same, because based on everything I heard at the time, it just wasn't a good move. When people voted for the library, I know they did it because they thought about Rydell Street. And so they did it in good faith, because it was offered in good faith. My father has been in fire service for 57 years, he's just newly retired. So this is really special to me. And I know that we received a lot of emails, and every time I responded back when people said, "Please, I want this for the library," I always responded back, "Fire station. I really want to do the best for the firemen and for the fire station too." And it wasn't because I'm against the library. I voted for that as a counselor. I'm donating to it, I really want it and I support it, but I very much support this fire station too. And so whenever anybody took the time to write "fire station" in an email or mention it in a phone call at the same time, it just heightened my respect for those people even more, because, believe it or not, this job was tough. I remember early on, when I first started going to the Public Safety Commission meetings, and the permanent and the temporary, one night, I kind of went off, and I was talking about the pandemic. I was out of work for six months. And I was trying to do my best to help, you know, keep the restaurants afloat. So instead of grocery shopping, that's what I did in place of grocery shopping, is just buy double and triple meals. You know, I sit on the board of the YMCA for fundraising to send kids to camp on Nell Quit literacy project. So I don't want people to think that counselors don't understand what's going on out there. I know I live in a community with lots of poverty, and I do my best, and I take this job as counsel very seriously. And I don't want anyone doing broad strokes. Like if we vote yes today, we don't care about anything else. I'm a renter. Every time something happens, our water and sewer goes up, so does my rent. So I understand that. So yes, I am offended, and I'm upset when I hear that I vote, or I may vote, and I don't care about all the people in Greenfield. Because I do. This is a very hard decision. I don't know how it's going to come out tonight, but I just want to have one night's rest. This was very difficult. This was a lot of thinking. Like Counselor Forghee, I went back and forth. And I know the night that I must have scared the community, because that night when I spoke, the next day, I got so many emails, I couldn't believe it. But the good thing about that was, they heard about it, they showed up, they listened. And that's what I want to say about this community. We have given so much opportunity to speak about this. There's been so many meetings. I was so sad whenever I missed one, because I don't get out of work till 5:00, and I would just race in the house and pop on as soon as I can, and I would miss bits and pieces. But I always look in the participant box, it's the one thing I do that you're all there. So I'm going to be voting yes. I think it's long overdue. I know that we can do this, I know it'll work together. We'll work together, and we'll take care. I think we'll keep pursuing grants. We already have two counselors, Counselor Forghee, who have their eyes on our finances next year. So please trust me. Okay? Thank you.
Oh, I haven't done that yet, this virtual season. Damn it! So anyway, anyone else to speak? Before we move to vote? Seeing none. Clerk Scott will do a roll-call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Abstain.
Vice President Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Emphatically, yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forghee?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
President Stumpel?
Yes.
The motion passes with 12 yeses.
Great. And I do want to thank the mayor and the building committee team for all the hard work. We've come to you again and again and again and again and again for information packaged in 100 different ways. And to me, that's teamwork. Your willingness and openness to get us the information that we need. It's been a wonderful process, albeit, we say, complicated. I've learned a lot through the process, and I know that others have too. And again, if people in the public still have questions about the process, please continue to reach out, because there's always more to learn. And I encourage you to ask those questions, and we'll be there to answer them for you as we move to the project. So thank you.
Thank you. If I may speak, thank you very much. We will do you proud. You have no reason to think any other way. And yes, please continue to reach out to us as you have questions as this project moves forward. We are going to move forward, and you have a good team working. You have two good teams. You have the team for the library, and you have the team for the fire station. And they are extraordinary. So thank you very much, we will do you all proud, all of the citizens of Greenfield. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on, so taking from the table, non-binding resolution. That's on page 19. I'm going to ask, this is connected to the fire station. Please, Vice President Wheeler, will you read on page 19?
Yes, I will. Moment. Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table a resolution in support to begin construction of the temporary fire station at the Hope Street parking lot, which was tabled at the November 18, 2020 city council meeting.
Motion's been made, do I hear a second? No second. So this will not be taken up tonight. Thank you, Vice President Wheeler. Next, we have, do I hear a second from Counselor?
Mayo.
Second from Counselor Mayo. All right, so the motion's been made and seconded by Counselor Mayo. Any discussion here? So this is to take from the...
Yeah, thank you.
So this is to take from the table. So if you vote yes, we're taking it off the table to then discuss. If you vote no, it will sit on the table. Counselor, Clerk Scott, we'll do a roll-call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
No.
Counselor Gwynn?
No.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Dolan? Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Vice President Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forghee?
No.
Counselor Ricketts? Does the president wish to vote?
Uh, no.
The motion fails, it remains on the table.
Thank you. Item 3, I don't know if the agenda, I don't think the agenda's been changed, but item 3 has since been withdrawn, and that was the zoning for the marijuana cultivator. Sorry, every time I hear a beep, I check what's going on. So we will not be hearing that tonight, as it was withdrawn by the transmitter. So Counselor Dolan, please, on page 36.
Yes, indeed. Move that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Section 200-4, .13, Flood Plan District F, as indicated in the attached strike through Exhibit A, and further amend the table of contents and index of the code and further that nonsensative changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield.
Thank you. I heard a second, kind of.
Second, Ricketts, sorry.
Thank you. Motion's been made, second report from Committee Counselor Dolan.
Yes, this was a unanimous positive recommendation. This is a, just some updated language that we got from the higher-ups that we need to be in compliance.
Great, any discussion here? Seeing none, we will vote, Clerk Scott.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore? Counselor Gilmore?
I'm sorry, do you hear me?
I did not.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice President Wheeler?
Aye.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forghee?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Uh, no.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dolan, on page 48, please.
Move that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, relative to incorporating low-impact development, or LID techniques, as indicated in the attached strike draft, Exhibit B. And further amend the table of contents and index of the code and further that nonsensative changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield.
Second, Ricketts? Thank you. Motion's been made, seconded, report from committee, please.
So this was another unanimous positive. And I just want to go over a little bit of the process, so folks know where this came from. This, a lot of work has gone into this from a number of groups around town. The original version that was submitted to the Planning Board was, the Tree Committee suggested some amendments, and they chose to recommend most of those amendments. And EDC concurd with those changes. EDC, as part of our deliberations, we also added, if you will look on, let's see. Trying to find the page. Well, I can't find the page, but I will summarize. Because we added the definition of three-family housing in an earlier round of zoning changes, we just wanted to update this ordinance to reflect that, because there was a gap the way it was between two-family and multifamily, that wasn't addressed. So we added that three-family housing be allowed on slightly larger plots in line with the rest of the low-impact development recommendations. So would someone might clarify, what's on the table is the version that EDC passed, correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, you kind of cut out?
What's on the table now is the version that EDC passed, no more amendments are necessary.
That would be probably Tammy.
Or President Stumpel? What is on the table is the version that was proposed. If there are any amendments that need to be made, they need to be made on the floor. And just as a reminder, they need to be non-substantive changes.
Correct. So what we're dealing with, Counselor Dolan, is what the public hearing was on. And so if your committee made changes after the public hearing, and they're friendly, then yes, we'll do so tonight. But as you know, if they're not friendly, not that they're not friendly, but if they're substantive, then we'll have to redo the process. Does that make sense?
Yes. We may run into some issues, as we often do, with the definition of what's substantive and what's not.
It was page 56, Tim.
Yep, I'm seeing the addition there, yep.
So is it best if I make the motion for those amendments at this point?
I would say move forward with the amendments. And once we know what is on the table for your amendments, we can kind of navigate what is friendly versus substantive.
Yeah.
Page 3, Tim.
Was that 83? 53.
Page 56D3, I mean, you added a 3A.
Yeah, I thought that we had the recommended language from EDC in this packet. Was I imagining that?
Council President?
Yes.
I'm going to move to table this, because there's a lot of confusion around this. So can we approach this again in our next meeting?
I think that is a great idea. Motion's been, I mean, motion to table has been made... Uh, motion's been, I mean, uh, it's, motion to table has been made and second. All those in favor?
President Stumpel?
Yes.
Can you second the motion, please?
I think, was that?
Counselor Gwynn.
Gwynn, yes.
Thank you.
Um, so far, we have, we have, um, no, I'm sorry, I was on abstentions. Are there any abstentions? Motion passes. So this will be tabled for next meeting. Um, and Counselor Dolan, at that time, we can make sure that we have, uh, clearly delineated what your committee has submitted for amendments.
And I'd like to apologize, I, um, the version I was thinking of was in the EDC minutes and I thought that it was in this packet. So that's my mistake.
No worries. And so we'll be ready, we'll be ready in January. Thank you very much. Um, next, we have Counselor Gwynn, please, on page 61.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amends the code of the city of Greenfield by adding Chapter 341, Ordinance Prohibiting Electioneering During Voting For All Elections Within Greenfield As Attached Here To and Further Amend the Table and Index of Contents of the Code and Further That Nonsubstantive Changes To the Numbering Of The Ordinance Be Permitted In Order That It Be In Compliance With The Numbering Format Of The Code Of The City Of Greenfield.
Second, Ricketts?
Yep.
Motion's been made, second, report from committee, please.
Uh, this was a positive unanimous, uh, vote. Uh, what this does, um, just to kind of paraphrase, is now with the changes in election with early voting and, uh, such, um, we have always had an electioneering, uh, bylaw, uh, you know, in, in the books, but now this moves it. So wherever the voting is taking place, whether that be City Hall or another location, that we allow voters to be able to access their, uh, voting without being interfered with by people electioneering within the same constraints and, uh, distances that we've always had in our election locations.
Great, thank you very much. Um, any discussion on this one, folks? Nope. All right, we'll move to vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Madam President, I don't see that she is currently on the call. So I will, oh, Counselor Gilmore?
That was me, I think.
Oh, okay. Um, again, I don't see she's currently on the call. If it's acceptable, I will come back to her in a moment.
Yes.
Counsel, uh, Vice President Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
I'm sure he'd say yes.
Okay, and I'm going to take a moment and look for Counselor Gilmore. I do not see she is here, however, the, um, pass, vote passes by those attending unanimously.
Yeah, and I just checked again, too. She's not here, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on, we have presentation of petitions and similar papers. There are none. Uh, report of committees. I know that Counselor Dolan wanted to give a brief, um, report from EDC regarding our withdrawn motion.
Yes, um, I'll be brief. Uh, so we had, um, Higher Yields, which, um, is interested in opening a marijuana cultivation and, um, and retail, uh, outlet up on the Burnerstone Line. Um, we were talking about the zoning, they were the ones who submitted this zoning proposal that was withdrawn. Uh, it got a negative recommendation from the planning board unanimously and a positive recommendation from EDC, um, also unanimous. Um, the consensus was that this business was, um, something that we wanted to support, but, uh, we had some differences in terms of how to get there, um, because it's not in conformance with our current zoning. So, um, this will be coming back at some point in the near future, um, possibly in another form, but I just wanted to let, give folks a little bit of the rationale for why that was withdrawn.
Great, thank you very much. Um, any other reports from committee? Seeing none. Um, unfinished business? There is none. Um, old business? There is none. Uh, new business? Uh, Vice President Wheeler, please, on page 64.
Thank you. City Council First Reading, December 16th, 2020. Appropriate $163,000 from free cash to purchase radios for the fire and police departments.
Thank you. Um, motions for reconsideration? Seeing none and hearing none. Um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No move, Elmer.
Second, Wheeler.
Second, Mayo.
I heard a second from Wheeler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we will call this meeting adjourned at 8:58 PM. Uh, thank you, everybody, for your comments and your thoughtfulness over these past few months. Um, we can move forward and, and that's exciting.
Take it easy tomorrow.
Happy holidays.
Yep.